Question answered here after we go through the preliminary, what are we going to show you? And we will answer questions at that time. If we can't answer your question at this time, we'll make a note and get back with you on it. We have a couple of presenters here. I want to make one thing clear, this isn't a playing game tonight. We all live on a peninsula, and what we need to do is come together, city and county, and do what's best for the citizens of Richmond Hill. And I, we don't take anything else from here tonight. You need to take it back and make sure that your elected officials, city or county, do work together to bring together what's best for South Bryan County. And that's the main thing I want to make out of this tonight. Johnny, I think you're ready?
Yeah. Scott, is that you?
Yeah. Okay. Mike? I'm Johnny Murphy. I think I know the majority of everybody, a lot of you guys here. And I want to make sure, because of the standing room only that we have, Chris Lovell, myself, Russ, the mayor, everybody else that we've talked with, Scott, that, you know, in planning, you need real data. So it has got to be accurate. And the importance of all these maps that you see, and those that haven't had a chance to really go by and see them, that this really ought to be like the first of maybe three or four of these presentations, so more people can come. And honestly, I made the comment that, just to give you an idea, that churches have, you know, pretty good sized areas that you can meet on Thursday night or something. So any of y'all with your church might consider that. And then I personally think asking the county to let us use the annex building to make some of this presentation, because the data you're going to see tonight is the data that covers everything that's on this map. And that's part of what they've asked me to do, is present the map. And it starts with, and if I have to put the glasses on, in the twenties, most of y'all that have been around, everything that you see in the color, which is the shoreline going through, represents somewhere around fifty-some-odd thousand acres of uplands non-march. And Henry Ford started buying up all of it. And out of that entire fifty-something thousand acres, he didn't get it all, but he probably got somewhere between ninety and ninety-five percent of it. And at that time, the federal government was buying up all the land for Fort Stewart. So some people say that, you know, why Ford being here? A lot of it had to do with Ford wanted to make sure that he's kept a close working relationship with federal government, because his company naturally would want to make all the vehicles, which makes a lot of sense. Then, in the forties, which we actually have the plat, Henry Ford was the first person to develop land down here. And he created Richmond Hill Village, which is known as the bottom, the area across the railroad track, which is Ivy Street and that little area. And then he also built the Blueberry neighborhood that you have down here, close to I-95. When Ford passed away in 1951, the Ford, he died in the late forties, but in 51, the Ford Foundation put up this whole entire tract of land for sale. And International Paper Company purchased it. And in the timber industry, anybody familiar with it, this is some of the best timber growing lands there are, anywhere along the coast. And I think a lot might have to do with the type of soils and the moisture in the soil. But International Paper Company bought it in 1951. There's a lot of history I won't go into, but they actually did do a little bit of development in Pierceville Forest. International Paper Company actually started Pierceville Forest, about a hundred and thirty-something lots back in the late sixties, very early seventies. During the period of time with Henry Ford and the rest of the people scattered around this whole, the city and this whole entire peninsula, was it around three hundred families? That's how many lived here. From 1951 till 1981, you've got the city, which was in 1962, Ford Foundation took care of everything for them. They took care of the medical facilities, the schools, the commissary. And then when they pulled out and sold to International Paper Company, a group of people got together and they petitioned the state to form the City of Richmond Hill in 1962. And that gave you a mayor, that gave you the city council. Anybody here, I met one lady from Main Street with the Property Owner Association. So, you know, basically, they created a homeowner association and made the City of Richmond Hill. Prior to then, it was, as you know, named as Wayne Station. For, from 51 to 81, a little bit of land was developed. It finally grew to about six hundred total families. And then in 1981, International Paper Company put the entire holdings on the market again, looking for it to sell for the second time, which they kept twenty-six parcels of land scattered around anywhere that it had creek access, water access, marsh, and naturally, those tracts of lands that were in the city had access to water and sewer. And they put all four thousand acres on the market for sale at one time. And then that's when all the developers from everywhere started buying up the land. And anybody that lives in Redbird Creek, anybody that lives in Main Street, here in Point, Jericho, you know, you live in those, in one of those four thousand acre, or twenty-six parcels of lands that got developed. And then that was done by International Paper Company's real estate division. Then in 83, in 81, when they put it up sale, ITT Rayonier is the company that bought the holdings from International Paper for the same reason, to grow pine trees. And they kept it pretty close to trying to sell anything. The first piece they sold in 1983 was a tract of land across the street from the Ford plantation. Dave Ferrone, as y'all know, was the original buyer of that. He restored the mansion, built the golf course, and then there was the Holly Hill Trail Park subdivision across, the fears that that might expand, so that's, he negotiated the deal to buy that land from Rayonier. Then, and starting in the later eighties, then Rayonier started turning loose some of the lands. Oxford was the first tract of land that Rayonier sold that turned into a subdivision. Then Buckhead, and Buckhead North was a couple of the other ones. And then they pulled back for a while, because the county put pressure on them, because it was looking like everything was for sale, and that it was going to be more growth than what you could manage. And so they kind of slowed down on it and, for a good while. And then Rayonier started selling off tracts of lands to raise money, basically during the recession. And that's where you started getting all these five acre tracts and, and larger developments. Timmy Casey, as y'all know, has done most of them, scattered around and brought that in. But the numbers, just to, from the history, that, you know, through Ford, in that period of time, three hundred families. By the time ITT, I mean International Paper Company sold out, we got six hundred families. And then from 1981 to today, thirty-six years, we've increased the number of families living on this peninsula to nine thousand four hundred new families. We are now at ten thousand families. So it's all brand new. And there'll be a lot of information shared with you. My hand is over the city limits. You see the balance of the land. There's a lot of information about the colors that you see that you need to know if you're interested in the community. After this meeting, I will stay here, and anybody who wants to learn any more about that, I'll be more than glad to share that with them. I think I'm through with that, honestly.
Jamie's going to hold on. Hey, I'm Russ Carpenter. I'm also on the Richmond City Council. Thank you for coming tonight. We've put up about every chair we have in the building of this room tonight. Anyway, to see the extent of the crowd is very encouraging to us. What we're trying to do here, as the mayor has said, as Johnny has begun, is to, just to communicate with you what we've done, what we still need to do. And at the end, as the mayor said, we're going to have questions and answers. In other words, we need to hear from you, what's worked, what hasn't, all right? And why did you do that? Anyway, one thing I would like to, one caveat, is that Richmond Hill, we only govern the city limits of Richmond Hill. But as has often been said, Richmond Hill, the city government, working with the county government, is what is going to be needed in order for us to overcome our challenges. And there are many challenges. Nobody here is, you're all here because you know there are challenges with growth and traffic. All right. Growth and traffic management, why we're here, what we've done, what remains to be done. Those are two parts of our presentation. All right. We have been, you might not agree, but I want to say we have been proactive, all right? And in other words, proactive meaning, we haven't waited for this stuff to build up and try to start managing it. We fortunately have an excellent school system here. People are coming. We have beautiful scenery. People are coming. Lower taxes, people are coming. So the growth has been there. We had a little bit of a break during the recession. That is when the city really started saying, hey, here's what we can do to better prepare for the growth. We, first of all, focused on beautification. Crossroads is a good example of that. With more people coming, they demand things look better. All right. Businesses say, hey, I want to move into your community, but we are concerned about the looks. We started with that. With historic preservation, from 144, from Highway 17 down to Publix is what we call the Ford District. That is, we're a Ford Historic District. And there are strict guidelines that commercial buildings must follow in order to locate there. And then we have quality development. How can we provide for the growth, all right? Give people their property rights that they are entitled to, and at the same time have better neighborhoods, better built homes, and more green space, less crowded homes? Taking all into account impact on schools and traffic congestion. We upgraded services and facilities to better accommodate existing and future needs. All of this, I'm delighted to turn this over to Scott Allison, our Planning and Zoning Director. He's going to drill down into a few details about that. Johnny will come back up and really go through the map. It's fascinating to learn how much the traffic is going on to 144, how much it affects those of us in the city, all right? And then, as we said, at the end, we're going to hear from you.
Thanks, Russ. I'm Scott Allison, Director of Planning and Zoning, Assistant City Manager. I'm going to get into a little bit more detail. I'm not going to belabor on the statistics and things like that, but I want to provide you with the details over the broad brush of the Russ provided on the things that we have been doing and what remains to be done. Specifically, city council staff, steering committees, a group of residents, business owners, and applicants to submit in to new plans in the city, developers, and really anyone involved with development in the city. We worked over a three-year period for new development regulations. The purpose of that was to try to outpace the growth with regulations. You know what council does, and they're elected to create policy and law. And then our jobs as staff is to try to enforce that law, whether they be, you know, codes that the police department enforces, or a zoning-related issue. Specifically in the, in the, in the development regulations, we added requirements for larger lots in this, in the residential districts. Larger lots with increased setbacks and buggers. And then within the planned unit developments, which is not to get into, in the zoning terms, but to work with your larger communities, you'll see there's some give and take with developer trails, you know, around some of these beautiful wetlands that we have pathways for bicycles and pedestrians. We tried to think of all of the things that were, not necessarily missing in our community and within our residential areas, but what, what do you see in all the places that you go and you say, this is, well, this is who has it? This is what we need. Specifically, in development regulations, zoning practices over the last couple of years, and in the new development regulations, we restricted the location and maximum number of multifamily and single-family residential units per acre. Simply put, when we redid the zoning map, we didn't add any additional multifamily-zoned areas. If they were already entitled, we didn't take that away from them either. When I say entitled, if you were previously sold, sold that you could do something on your property, we don't necessarily have the right to take away your right, your rights, okay, as a property owner. What, what council does is, within their purview, is they can set some parameters about that. Speaking on that, we implemented standards, these are the parameters, for higher-quality building materials, upgraded amenities, landscaping, to some of the previously, previously as councils that approve some things. And over the years, as the properties have been designated for that, those things come to fruition with growth. And what this council has done is, is try to make them look and fit within the way they should in the community. And the recent multifamily residential zoning approvals have been specifically for townhomes and senior living apartments. We've had the two senior living apartment approvals, one off Timber Trail, one over here by the Goodwill. And then the townhome developments, provides another housing option for the military families that come in. And these are two-story townhomes with garages. They're not, they're not small, and they provide another housing option. And in a dense area of the city, if you go to textbook zoning, this is where it is more dense. You see it on the map, this is, this is the area of density within the county. It is the city. Specifically related to those aesthetic and, you know, amenity-type things, we created an architecture review board to oversee the landscaping, architecture, signage, and site design along this historic area that, all of these Henry Ford buildings, to try to preserve those, and to try to have new development follow suit for what, what we have, what makes us special. It's, it's a geographic specialty of being a peninsula, but it also is a cultural and historic specialty with Ford and his influence here. The upgraded services that Russ mentioned, we've added nearly three miles of new sidewalks. Council's made a purchase of future park space, which you'll see these things on the boards on the front row of the walls. Upgraded our existing parks. We've added a new passageway with nature trails out of Sterling Creek, a new wastewater treatment plant, which I'm sure you know about. We've increased our police-community interaction, new fire protection equipment in vehicles. You might have seen our new fire truck, either responding to, or driving down the road. And stormwater drainage, to try to help better with our localized flooding, and just in general, we are in a low-lying area. So that's what we've done specifically for growth. As far as traffic is concerned, you may have read about a transportation study that was done. This council initiated and adopted the study. It wasn't just something that we had a consultant do for us. Council adopted it and they create regulations that say, okay, developer, this is the study, this is what it says, now, this is, these are the regulations, probably by and, if not, if not more often than that, depending on, depending on. For those of you that would have known a little bit more about it, it measured how our roadways are currently used, which we experienced, but to really get down and analyze it. And it predicted the future needs based on just what properties are allowed to do. And identify the needed improvements and the potential future funding options. There's a lot of options out there, some are better than others. And specifically for the city, the intersection improvements and access management, when I say access management, it's, not every single development needs two to three curb cuts or ways the access 144. Need more controlled access, interconnectivity between developments. And it prescribed for us to set aside land for widening projects. You know, within the city, there's already a lot of areas with four lanes in the median, but as it continues to grow out, there, there needs to be land set aside in order to accommodate widening. And again, I mentioned it earlier, connectivity between developments to reduce congestion on our major roadways. And you see some of the, more, more through the neighborhood and come out on the back side of the road, as opposed to just having to get right onto 144. To give an overview, the major roads is on whose they are. Again, as the mayor mentioned, this isn't finger-pointing, it's an education, and also to tell us some of the challenges that we have. US-17, Highway 144 are Georgia Department of Transportation. They control those. We have influence. A lot of times, they like when we have a financial influence. They will gladly accept money for new improvements, and you'll see the council's allocated plenty of that. But they, they control those roadways. Harris Trail, Fort Royal Road, and Brisbane Road within the, within the city limits are Bryan County roadways. And luckily, most of our growth has occurred on Timber Trail, Brisbane Road, and Fort Royal Road, that gives options for Harris Trail and 144, which Council Murphy will address later. And then Timber Trail, recently, we worked out an agreement with the county to take over Timber Trail as far as ownership. It was after it was repaved. And you may have noticed that we, within the last month, widened out those shoulders. We've added some sidewalks down it in the last couple of years. That's the road that the city has complete control over. The intersections, don't worry, I'm not going to go through all these. The point of this slide is, all of those roadways and where they meet up, again, without ownership, we don't have a lot of control, albeit we have influence. We have the ability to create partnerships, we can serve as conduits, as you as citizens to get information out of GDOT. Trust me, we talk to them on a weekly basis, and we hear from you guys about, hey, the light at wherever, it's unusually timed right now. I sat there for a long time, no one's even around, it was red light. We call them, we let them know, they need to know that. They may be in the office of Jessup, and they need to know that. They are, they are responsible when we talk to them. Specific improvements, I said it twice, the influence we have, it many times is financial, okay? Those intersections, albeit they aren't ours, they are what we call the right-of-way for GDOT. The council has allocated financial resources, the two, the $2 million, to the improvements of the last few years. That's $400,000 for new signals at Mulberry 17 and the new Timber Trail 144. We've done upgraded signals of crossroads that you've seen and we're currently working on. We should get bids back on Thursday for Exchange Street and Fort Avenue to improve that signal. That's to help get out of the Kroger area, and any development coming on Rushing Street to get dedicated left signals and things like that. Three-quarters of a million dollars for new roadway connectors to try to alleviate some traffic congestion on 144, the Fort Royal and Brisbane Road area, and get people out to Harris Trail, another alternative without having to take Timber, Brisbane, Fort Royal, another connection through. And annually, council allocates about $300,000 for surface improvements. Recently, the Bottom Sterling Creek Plantation, Pierceville is about to kick off, Mulberry, and you saw the Timber Trail, or I mentioned, sorry, the Timber Trail shoulders. And this doesn't necessarily have a dollar amount attached to it, but it's extremely important. GDOT partnerships, Georgia Department of Transportation partnerships, we had, we, council did a really good job politically to get turn lane, the right turn onto 17 off of 144. If you recall, that made it, that was a couple of years ago, but it really helped. We already had some backups from school peak hour traffic that really helped get people onto 17 quicker. That was, that was council's political involvement. And we're doing, we're trying to do the same for Harris Trail and 17, and Fort Royal and 144, those GDOT partnerships. So, that's what we've done. So what remains to be done? Well, we, I talked about all these policies and all these regulations, these laws. Well, we, the city, the council, we distribute, adhere to those policies and make the, the developers and any, any applicants adhere to them as well. We need to continue to focus our efforts on the beautification and things that Council Parker mentioned. You may or may not have heard, we've started a program with our downtown development authority to try to attract the right kinds of restaurants and businesses without infringing on property rights. Again, you know, there are people, what we call entitlements. If they're permitted to do things on their property, it's not our job to sit up here, or council sit up here and say, no, you can't do that. It's more to create the guidelines of how they, not necessarily hold their hand to them to walk through it. We need to continue those ever-important GDOT partnerships from 144, 17, and the 95 interchanges. We are at their mercy to some degree, but we have a great relationship with the Georgia Department of Transportation. And most importantly, I think we need to solicit partnerships with Bryan County Board of Commissioners for those other roadways that I listed that are the county's. If all of the intersections are either Department of Transportation or the county, and none are the city's control, we've got to solicit partnerships with the Board of Commissioners of Bryan County for improvements for Harris Trail, Fort Royal, Brisbane. We're working on the 95 interchange, you should see plans up there for that. And any new roadway connectors that impact city in South Bryan County. With that, Council Murphy has some additional slides, some growth and traffic management exhibits that we want to show.
We're trying to be very careful with this, this was a, how they put together, hopefully we can get a better map. And putting it up on a, on the screen, I think it's, I think it's personally better if you can see it, feel it, touch it. It's big enough, each one of you should be able to find the house that you live on, the lot that you live on. And, and this is not my, my strong point of talking in front of a group of people. And Scott helped me put some of this together. And, but, real quick, just talking about the roads that he just hit with you. My wife and I, Leslie, that you know, my daughter Paige, we moved here in 1983. And if you remember the history lesson, out of those 10,000 families, our seniority number is 611. So we were the 611th family to live here. I've watched those 96, those other 9,400, I've watched them come. And most of you know that I've developed a lot of the subdivisions that has brought some of those people. The, it, when you come and look at the map, and you start from this lower end where Kilcanee and Marker 107, and you drive up, you hit the intersection coming from Fancy Hall, just to give you an idea, that's 200, that's 188 families and 209 families merge, and this is families, not guards. And then, as they drive up and they hit Keller, that Keller intersection has 636 families speeding in from this way. At that point, there's only one way in, one way out. Then, some will take a left and go around, and they'll get over to where they'll make the decision whether they go out Belfast-Keller to Highway 17, especially those going to Fort Stewart, or do they circle back around by Donna Marsh and hit the new Harris Trail extension? These are the roads that Russ hit on that, that are predominantly owned by the county. But as you continue from Keller, and where the new traffic circle is located, one, they have an opportunity now, side, do they go left and go toward Harris Trail, or do they continue and go up 144? They meet 322 families coming out of the Spur area, Fort McCallister, Capeport, and Redbird Creek. And then they pick up a total of 656 families from Strathie Halls, Mill Hill, Mill Run, Oxford's. And then by the time they hit the intersection at Fort Royal Road where Publix is located, there are 2,723 families that live down here that marry up with 128 families from River Oaks. Anybody from River Oaks? Okay? One of the, the other hundred, you and the other 127, y'all hook up with those 2,700 families? That's 2,800 families hit that intersection. And, and everywhere I go, people say, man, when they going to put a red light at Fort Royal Road? Red light, about $250,000. The city has a certain amount of money. But if we built, if we paid the 250 out of the city budget and put a red light right there, then 95% of the people that's going to use it live on that side in the county, and they pay their taxes to the county, just like we pay the taxes to the county. So the county may or may not have an interest in participating financially. So educating everybody and understanding some of this stuff, including the leadership, then we might have a better chance of working together and figuring this thing out. But as they continue on up, you start picking up people out of where the mayor lives, at Sterling Woods, the Ford plantation, you pick up the Bottoms, some of the people from Main Street, Richmond Heights. And by the time you get to the red light at Hardee's, 20, 3,700 families are hitting this red light. And out of that, 2,900 originate out of the county, and 841 originate out of the city. Once again, look at that percentage difference between the two. But we took our money, and I can't tell you the exact number, but upgraded that entrance way. We thought it was important to put the black mask arms, because it looks like a first-class community compared to the wires that were hanging down. We got the DOT grant to do the landscaping. And then, some of this came about with what's going on at Kroger, and the new commercial building where Starbucks is going, and the need for the replacement of that traffic signal. And we kind of took the policy that everything, from now on- And we kind of took the policy that everything from now on should be the black mask arms, and let's get it right the first time. And, but these things are really expensive. But the point of that being is, it's not the city's residents that has created this massive traffic issue that everybody refers to. It's all of the people trying to come up from here to get onto this road, to be able to get out from that. You cannot, the storm should have shown you all that. You can't get out of the lower end of the county to Highway 17 on any of the three roads without going to city limits of Richmond Hill. So, somewhere along the line, you know, the two have got to work together. And we've got to figure out how to get these roads better set up. What Scott hit on, on the traffic study, and I'm going to speed it up so you don't need to ask questions. But that was one of the first things I wanted to do when I got here, because all those years I developed, all I heard was, in order to develop it, you need to do a traffic study. For $5,000, I give it to somebody, they give me a traffic study, throw it in the garbage can, because it didn't say nothing. But I could get my plans approved and I could develop. What we wanted was a real traffic study. And in order to study the traffic, you see that it's not studying the city, it's studying the city and the county as a whole. So, we went through, and we did one for a traffic study for all of South Bryan County, which includes the city. And I see one of the representatives from the company that we paid somewhere between 47 and 54,000. But the county's side that's causing these issues. With that said, enough for that. The other things, quickly, challenges that you talked about. I think, first of all, being proactive versus reactive with the challenges. And the first step, and quite honestly, it's this simple. We have two governments trying to manage one issue. And that's very difficult. So, that's a challenge that we got to figure out how to work with. Another one, the county has been broadcasting that they're building 200 to 300 houses a year, building programs. That's 200 to 300,000 a year, like at Buckhead East. You've got a new development that are getting ready to pop in right across from the Spur right here with 100 houses. I see the engineer that designed that back there. You've got several other projects that are being done here at 200 to 300 a year. All those people are going to also try to figure out how to get up 144. The big problem is if you go out Oak Level Road, is there anybody from Waterways here? Waterways, a couple of people from Waterways. Waterways is a planned unit development, approved for 2,900 homes. And they're up to, what, about 300, 350 lots so far? So, they're 10% into it. Extremely high density, multi-family scattered around, towns. And all of that is coming, it's going to hit Oak Level Road. They're hoping that interchange will help alleviate some of that problem, and people will go straight and get on I-95 here. A lot of people from Oak Level are still going to turn and go and get caught back up into this economic engine where all the commercial stuff is. And all the planners will tell you, people will always migrate toward those commercial districts. On top of that, the county approved a 5,000-unit PUD, right there under my hand, next to Waterways. So, when you add that 5,000 to the 2,900, and they're all going to try to come out Oak Level Road, then they got to figure out how are they going to get through this area to get out of here? When you say, can you do 2,900, can you do 5,000? Remember, I've watched in 36 years, I've watched 9,400 families get here. And a large percentage of those, I had something to do with them, that's a challenge. The peak traffic, we already hit a little bit on the Port Royal deal. Just give you an idea of how much traffic is hitting in there that is coming from out, that's a challenge in our planning. The Port Royal, Harris Trail intersection, Belfast siding, in this traffic study that was done, anybody living in Dunham Marsh right now? Dunham Marsh. Somebody will be killed at that intersection. Is that true or false?
Absolutely true.
All right, guys, that's 50 to 70 mile an hour traffic coming three ways. I travel it all the time, there's been at least two cases that I almost got it. So, it's going to happen. And in our planning process, with the school, when they put the middle school down here, if you have a family that has children that's got to go to the middle school, they got to come down, get caught up in Dunham, Swat, Dunham Marshes. That's the name, that was the name, they changed it. That was the name, I apologize. But I've been here too long. But anyway, they have to come and get in that intersection, then they got to go down and get into the Belfast intersection where we had the school bus get hit and wrecked. And it was a miracle, from what I understand, for those people that were there, that someone did not get seriously injured. And I think they credited the school bus driver for saving that. So, yes. So, bringing, bringing all those people down. Now, we got a $100 million high school, and they're going to build the new high school somewhere in this area. And now, all these people got to come down and join all the other people and get caught up in that same issue. So, when you're planning, you need to know these facts, you need to know the data, and you need to be projecting what's going to go on. And I will tell you, the city is 100% involved in making sure that happens. And so, those are challenges that I can get rid of. Funding, how do you pay for it? I can leave those up. How do you pay for all this stuff? Again, I've been here too long. In the past, I've been right there with them every time. You host a fish fry for people in Department of Transportation, and you invite them there. That's planned, that's, that's how it's planned, trust me. Second thing you do, you hope that you know somebody that knows somebody that's at the Department of Transportation that can help. And then you sit around and then you hope somebody will throw Richmond Hill a little bone and give us a little money to expand the record. Look how long it's been trying to get Highway 144 forelaid. How many years that that's tried to take place? But that's, that's how it was planned for all the years that I was here, up until four, five, six years ago. The present planning that the city's working on, there's two real critical ones. This IPD fund is working with the landowners like you do in most communities. Anybody that has been to nice communities around, and the Island Plantation in Florida is one, Cary, North Carolina is one. They all have some three or four letters right here where it represents cash trying to go in to provide the funding so that you can get the infrastructure ahead of the growth. The second part is, we passed T-Spots. This community, the city and the county, the city and the county passed T-Spots. But we were tied to a regional T-Spots program. And Chatham County voted it down, a couple of other ones did too. So, we lost the ability to be able to use that sales tax money to build our roads. And T-Spots generates about $30 million for this community to build new roads and alleviate some of the problems that we're talking about on those challenges. The law was passed, we now can pass our own T-Spots, and we do not have to share that with Chatham County or any of the other counties. It's all our money and stays right here in Richmond Hill and Bryan County. Now, all y'all got to do is figure out, how do we get T-Spots on the ballot so we can vote for it? Because you have to vote it in. Somewhere along the line, hopefully, that'll, that'll get done. IPD, just so you'll know, it's real simple. Infrastructure prior to development. And if you go to and look at all this growth, everything's planned already. The schools are where they're being built. And one of the colors that you see is the private landowner. And in the earlier slide I showed you, is, it was ITT Rayonier, it's just Rayonier now, and then they got a couple of extra names goes with that. But Rayonier owns all this property. And if you sit down with Rayonier and say, look, we want to put infrastructure in prior to the development. We want the roads in, we want the sidewalks where they're supposed to be, true pedestrian walkways like you see over in Bluffton, the right street lighting, park benches, irrigation, the water coming from our own plant, we can have all that. All we got to do is sit down with them and work through it, and do it under a good plan and a smart plan. And then, we can get us a road that will connect Harris Trail to Belfast siding where the new interchange is going, probably drop a road down to the middle school. And then you can take all this traffic that's going on, and you can keep them out of the Dunham Marsh area and that intersection, and you can keep them out of the Belfast siding intersection. And then, this has been approved, that interchange is getting ready to start construction. Then, go ahead and get the road in before they build that high school. And then, we'll save, like you said, the people possibly getting more traffic, you put down there in front of Dunham Marsh, the worse it's going to get, and traffic study says that needs to be a traffic circle. And it says it should be here, and it says it should be there. So, anybody that's living out there, put pressure on it. I think that that, the last one is simple, how to solve the problem. We only do what, and we should do what? And it's that, that easy. So, all we got to do is figure it out. Plan, plan, plan. I think two governments running one issue is showing up right now with the struggles I see going on in the city is becoming very difficult. Talk to Brad Brookshire, everybody here probably knows Brad, give him a call and express your concerns with that, he's interested. I already said, I think that this needs to be the first of maybe three or four or five presentations like this, and bring your friends, your neighbors, and let's get all of the real facts that's going on. You know, while we're starting the planning process. I think with that, Scott and Mayor, I think I've covered it.
All right, I think we're ready, ready for questions? All right, go back here.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, if you go out to the traffic circle you got there, the annex out there, that is the best thing you can do for every one of these intersections? Because it forces people to slow down, first of all, and it keeps your traffic flowing. So, that is the best thing. If you get this population building, you're not going to be able to build roads fast enough. But if you put those intersections in there, it should make it a lot smoother and safer for you. All right?
What's the order? Because I'll take it back, you said you've got 6,000 cars trying to go down three roads and none of them were designed for any of them. So, what's the order you're going to fix these roads to try and alleviate the congestion construction?
All right, part that I will tell you is, in the traffic study, the interchange has been approved, and they're supposed to light the, or let the contracts this fall, from what I understand. But everybody knows that's going to be a couple of years for getting that done. They're going to tear it out, anybody that uses this road, those, these 841 families will now be diverted, and they'll have to use Harris Trail and 144.
Is there a way?
They have to.
There's always a way that you can, do they, Belfast Keller siding, would they jump 17 first in conjunction with that, and then move?
Well, it is, it is going first, it's the first one to start. Simultaneous, they are going to start the widening of Highway 144.
How long on Harris Trail?
Okay, which, when they do 144 and they close the other one, that's going to throw all the traffic on the Harris, a lot on Harris. Those strips that you saw put in down each side of the road, Chris Lovell and Scott Allison can tell you about those strips.
I need to say right now, I'm not going to be able to get out of my neighborhood.
Where do you live?
Main Street.
Main Street.
You just dumped 9,000 cars down that road.
And I think, I think this, this, this is one of the reasons we're having this is, we understand your frustration and your problems of getting out. I live in Sterling Woods, I can't get out of my driveway some mornings.
You can't get out from the people coming from the high school over to the middle school.
But that's why we're here tonight, and we are concerned, and we do want to listen to your thoughts on it. But we open for suggestions too now.
Yep. Part of what they're going to do when they do the interchange, and help me out, Ralph, but my understanding is that they are going to open up the ramps that gets you on to 95.
Yeah.
So, if you're coming down Belfast Keller, coming this direction towards 17, there will be a way to get on north. And there will be a way, if you're coming from 17, to get on south. That's why they closed the bridge to do that construction. That'll take a little bit more time for a construction period, but they did that for two reasons. One is emergency vehicles. And, you know, if you, if you need to get an ambulance and there's an ability to get you on the interstate quicker while they're doing construction that you don't even have right now, that's, that's a huge benefit.
How long before that would be done?
That's, so what will happen is, the project itself is about a 24 to 30-month project. And what will happen, as soon as they start on the bridge, their first, their first order of magnitude is to create those ramps.
Are they, can they widen that road at the same, that road at the same time they're doing the bridge?
The bridge can accommodate a future widening.
No, but I'm saying.
The roadway itself is not planned to be widened.
That, that is planned in the future, it's not anything right now. And there again, it's, it goes back, we need a joint effort between the city and the county.
I was just trying to look, you did that, then you did Harris Trail, wide that to 48. Then you did 144, you now, they have options to go. You start 144, the other two can't handle the traffic that's on their mouth? You're just sitting there saying disaster is waiting to come.
If you pass T-Spots, if you pass T-Spots, I believe widening Harris Trail should be completely rushed.
I'll start with Belfast Keller siding?
Right.
Harris Trail.
Belfast Keller siding, then Harris Trail.
Well, what we'll do, we'll take back that suggestion, because I think that that goes back, and we need to solicit partnerships with the county. And we, we hear you. Because what's happening is, is that Belfast Keller, it's a roadway that's somewhat in certain areas outside of our control, we need to do those partnerships.
We're dumping a lot of traffic, I mean, a lot of traffic.
Understandable.
Yeah, I'm back here.
Just a quick question. We're talking about the traffic coming out of Belfast and all that. What about if there's an accident on I-95 and we're robbing traffic through town? Is there any consideration given to that?
Are you talking about when, when the interstate's closed down?
Yeah, they close out and they rob traffic through town.
We don't have any control over that. That's, yes ma'am.
I'm in here about two years ago, I lived in Dublin, Ohio, in suburban Oklahoma, still I go. And, well, I'm in a, very traffic-y, but this has been the worst that I've ever in a small town. But, I mean, I don't understand why housing developments keep, continue to be approved, because Dublin, okay? And they've grown a lot, just like here. But they do the roads first, they figure out the traffic situations, everything, before they keep and continue to approve further housing developments, further apartments, further, you know, I see that we're putting the part before the whole course. We're, you're just saying, we're going to add 8,000 portfolios to the end of this, okay? But we can't even get what we've got now to where they need to be. But let's, you know, and then I also, my second issue is, you know, coming from Dublin, obviously, they had a policy there, it was 10-minute bus ride, bus ride, okay? My daughter goes to the middle school, she's on the bus for 25 minutes to get to the middle school. I think that is ridiculous. I mean, my commute into Savannah is not, it's just 25 minutes. There is no reason why a child should be sitting on a bus for over an hour every day, and that's what's not getting stuck in traffic. An hour, every day, she's sitting on a hot bus with no air conditioning, I at least have air conditioning in my car. But a hot bus for over, you know, the one day when there was an accident, she was on the bus for 45 minutes. And I'm like, that is just, that's unacceptable. I mean, it's just, you know, I don't understand why you would continue to approve housing and, you know, Buckhead East now, they have like 400 homes and... And all this continue to build, build, build. You know, we already know that there's issues that are already there. But let's just add more to it. You know, and that's, I guess why everybody here is frustrated.
I understand, but there again, we cannot get, come out and mandatory say that you cannot build inside Bryan County Richmond Hill. It, uh, it, we've gotta come up with a solution to handle what we've got.
I, I have two things I'd like to present. First of all, are you suggesting that the county, uh, commission is not working with you?
Uh, I will not answer that.
You were in the county room.
I, I also live in Sterling Woods and I too have difficulty getting out on the highway. But the, one of the main reasons is that nobody obeys the speed limit there. And if there was some way to slow those people or make those people get up 10 minutes earlier so that they can get their work on time, that would certainly help.
Third is that, you know, there's a conflict, you know, working together. How about, and I know they're at a commissioners meeting right now. But how?
This needs to be the first of a series of three or four. We would like, I personally would like to take this to the county commission meeting, to county commissioners chambers there. Cause they have a big room and a traffic circle. And let's put this same presentation on, cause this is all facts.
Every, every meeting we have through this week.
Whoa, 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 no, hey, let's go through.
If T-SLOSS was passed, would that be, would the county still be in control? Or would, would we have the funds then to do it?
Would T, if T-SLOSS must have passed, county would get 60% of the money. We would get 30%. Hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it out, please. Uh, a little history on SLOSS too. The county right now, they get 60% out of SLOSS. We get 30%. 10% goes to Poulers, uh, Pembroke, I'm sorry. You know how much of that money comes out of the city of Richmond Hill? About 85, 90% of it comes out of the city of Richmond Hill. But anyhow, next, uh...
What's the process for the, the city of Richmond Hill to annex a lot of that property down in South Bryan County? So that way you can have a larger tax space. You can get that money flowing back into the actual city where all these people are going through.
If they, if they're interested, we're, we're talk to them.
Annexation is a voluntary exercise.
So is that like a vote that has to be put out?
Or there's two other methods. One of them is a petition. And the other is, is put it on a ballot. It just depends on the size of the area. But it's, it is a voluntary exercise. It's not a, you know, this isn't like a World War II strategy map where the city takes, takes over things. It's a, um, annexation, usually when people come into a city and want to be annexed, it's for additional services and things like that.
Right. I mean, I've looked in other areas where I've seen cities, you know, continuously grab parcels of land and, you know, work their way out so that they can increase that tax base. In Iowa, that's the way it works.
And that's what's happened over the years. Uh, down Brisbane Road to Port Royal. And incrementally, as people have developed those areas, uh, they're annexed into the city and they, they request to come in. So that, that may, that may happen as it grows.
Start talking about annexing, a lot of you probably don't know. They, they may not have any idea. You know, maybe there needs to be some information sessions about annexation.
Sure, we can do that.
Since it affects everybody.
Absolutely. And most, most people that do move here, they think that the city limits is all the way out to Kilkenny. Most people think that.
That's what I was gonna say is, we all, when we, you know, when you tell someone where you live, does anyone say, I live in Bryan County? No. We all live in Richmond Hill. And I think our mentality needs to shift in a way that we all want to come together to make it better. It doesn't matter who owns what road, guys. Just get it right for the people. It does not matter.
Yes ma'am.
Did I understand that, um, the widening of 144 is gonna start in the next?
Right spring of next year.
Do you know how long that's gonna take approximately?
Uh, probably close to two years. So you get to look at a lot of Orange Barrel.
How far down is the?
It will go all the way down to the tra- uh, traffic circle.
Gentlemen, thanks for the presentation. Uh, one thing that I didn't notice in the peak traffic issues, and it's a county issue, it is not a city issue. Where the county's blocking up half the major artery with the school traffic out here every morning. So those 9,000 cars that are flowing down 144 come down to one lane right, right here out in front. And, you know, it's a safety issue and, and, and we understand that. But, you know, if something could be done to, you know, double our traffic flow in the morning, it's a quality of life issue too.
Had you had planning in place, you would not have three elementary schools on one campus. You would have had them as neighborhood schools and all that traffic would not had to concentrate in one spot.
In my understanding, I met Paul Brookshire the other day. My understanding is, I can't remember which school, but they're starting it pretty late. On, on 8:45 or something. So that should help this area a little bit. Uh, with most of the, the school traffic not coming till later after everyone gets to Savannah.
Chris just, excuse me, mayor. Mayor, can I make a point?
Yeah.
What Chris, I'm sorry. What Chris, I didn't want to feed off of that way he said. What Chris just mentioned is working with the, uh, mentioned, Dr. Paul Brookshire, chairman of, or county, school superintendent. We are working with the school and to an extent, we are working with the county.
Sure.
The goal of tonight is to work better with all three of them. Right now, there is being scheduled a, uh, meeting, uh, for all four governments, which would be city of Richmond Hill, city of Pembroke, county school board and the county commissioners. So that's coming. We hear you, we understand, and that is a valid point.
What I would say, what Chris was talking about, we even discussed about building a school bus system? Because there's struggle, I get calls, texts every minute that this is getting delayed. This person's gonna get delayed. And, and even though I'm not, my daughter, I drive there. But she's getting, everybody thought about getting people to be bus drivers, cause the more we. I mean, I, cause I know, I know someone that. Have to work a couple of stops back and forth. That shouldn't be an issue. I mean, somehow we have to.
They, they made improvements every year and they continue.
And we'll, we'll make a note of that, pass it on to the school board. That's really a school board.
Did you?
You said had.
Put it in the back, back, back in the box, then I get you.
Uh, if you will visit some of the counties that did pass it, they've got the best roads. They even redid along their old bridges and what have you. And just, just to give you a perspective, if you raise $30 million in split in T-SLOSS, 75% of that money doesn't even come from people in Bryan County. It comes off that interstate. And basically the two biggest revenue sources are basically 144 and I-95 and Highway 17 and 95. So you gotta remember, you know, I don't like taxes, but I will do taxes if I see the results to go with it. So when we did that campaign, we showed a picture of an ambulance. A report of that picture was paid by people that were probably gonna never ride in that ambulance. So it goes back to this, I hope it gets back on the ballot because we need that infrastructure. We need these older roads to be upgraded. And we need a lot of new ones that work right into this plan. And, and that's about all I gotta say. Except, I want to commend this council. Y'all have done more for this community since I've lived here and I came right after Johnny did. Y'all have done a lot. You can see what you've done and I commend y'all for that.
Earlier you said had planning been in place, three, three campuses wouldn't have been built in the same place. But didn't you say that the new high school is going where the middle school is?
But.
Chris, that's where mine next to, it's in that area.
It's in that area? There are being new roads. We don't know exactly where it is. There's probably some people here do. But the, the planning, someone that said a moment ago, this IPD is, is in motion. So we've learned from everything everybody said, that the infrastructure, the lady from Ohio, the infrastructure's gotta go in first. I've been here 36 years, there's been one road built. One road built in 36 years. And that is the extension of Harris Trail Road to Dunham Marsh. That's the only new road for transportation for us to drive on. Now, think about that. 9,400 families, one little tiny road got built. We were rural, but there wasn't a lot of vision in the infrastructure stuff.
They're paved now.
That's right. And her seniority is ahead of mine.
I have one more thing. I think you've done a, a great job with this. I would like to see this available on the website so that we absolutely must do something about the intellectual aspect of this community, which involves the library. And one, the county, just donate that land and the county has to do something.
Well. And there again, the city of Richmond Hill, we've made 40%, roughly 40% of Bryan County taxes. We bought that property, the city bought it. And the city.
I understand that.
I know you want, but, but, but what you want us to do though, is you want in this council to do a double taxation for.
I don't see that as double taxation.
Well, it is a double taxation. And, and I'm not going to go into that.
Yeah. But, but, yes.
I have a question. You guys keep talking about of how there's different, you know, got parts of government that are responsible for different parts. What have you so far actually actively done to work with the county commissioners to get things up and running? Because obviously, since they're not here tonight, you've, there's, either you're running into walls or there's something not quite going communication wise.
We have ran in, we have ran into some walls. Uh, I could name several. Uh, I was asked, just give you one example. I was asked by Chairman Burns, the chairman of, uh, last year for Bryan County. He come to me and asked me, would the city be interested in taking over the water and sewer for South Bryan County? I hired an engineering firm, or we hired an engineering firm. And we could show, that we could say to the county, over the next 10 years, roughly $15 million. They would not even sit down and discuss it with us.
Yeah, I'd like to comment. I wanna.
Why would we want to do that? And you need all the control.
Well, let, let, let. Let me, let's, I don't, let's, let's not get sidetracked with that. To answer your question, we've had multiple meetings. I, I've met with them many times. We're actively trying to pursue those routes. It, I, I don't want to make more of this than it needs to be made of. But there are, we're actively trying to seek relationships and partnerships. Uh, I, I feel they'll come. I feel they will come. Uh, but as Karen was saying, I mean, there's, they're looking out for what they feel is their interest. I feel that there's some opportunities where we can certainly work together. I don't see eye to eye with them, with them a lot. But we, we're respectful and friendly to one another. And so I believe those things will come to fruition in time. To, to, so to answer your question, we are actively, actively trying to seek those relationships.
On that relationship right there, I mean, I find it ironic that especially going on Glorious, the Bryan County Library or the Richmond Hill Library is on county property, yet we are in the darn city limits. How is this working?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The, the library, the Richmond Hill Library, the shoebox you call a library?
Yeah.
It's actually a county facility in the city limits.
So is the county building by our fire department.
Yes.
So are the Redfields. I mean, there are multiples, county facilities within the city limits, for sure.
But when it comes to that, because with it being in the city limits, yet it is a county facility, why can't the two entities, like on behalf of the, this is a no brainer to come together and figure out.
I, I will, I will tell you why. I'll tell you why. We went and made a proposal for the, for the land. I'm telling you, both of y'all, if we donated the land today, the county's not going to build a library because the funding's not in place yet. It has nothing to do with the land. So, and I think Karen would probably back me up on that one. I've met with Ben and I've met with Carter. Um, it has, and Steve. The land has nothing to do with why we're not building a library today. Well, I'm just telling you what I've been told. I'm telling you what I've been told.
But they don't get the funding for a library unless there's land approved.
We're, we're here to discuss growth and traffic. We're not here to discuss the library. So, uh, yes, sir.
I, I'll meet with you guys at another time if you'd like to come by my office. I'd be happy to stand and talk to you in detail. Okay?
All right, go ahead.
Two questions with regard to taxes. For Mr. Murphy, uh, you gave the presentation on infrastructure prior to development. Sounds like a great idea. Can you just clarify that that will not be paid by the taxpayers? The second question to the mayor, I have heard that part of the I-95 air change will be paid by the T-SLOSS. If the T-SLOSS does not exist, who will pay that? Is that correct?
The county will pay, um, where their money will come from. The county will pay 50% of the, whatever the shortage is. The city will pay the other 50%. Iris will probably come out of SLOSS. We have not decided completely. But if T-SLOSS does pass, it will come out of T-SLOSS. Otherwise, it's probably going to come out of the next SLOSS cycle.
Because those of us who live in the city of Richmond Hill, whether it comes out of the town, um, sort of county or the city, we're paying for it.
Right.
Now, let me.
Yeah, you, you want me, there again, you're paying twice.
Let me ask you a question on infrastructure prior to development. You have a mechanism where government, any government, city or county, can put that infrastructure in place. But any of the property that is going to be in that area that you designate, where it's going to be built, gets, and I'll go ahead and say the word, basically an impact fee on every new unit that gets put in that area so that it does not get paid for by the people that are already here paying their property taxes. It comes from where growth pays for itself.
But that's paid before the, the homes go up.
Absolutely.
The infrastructure is paid for the taxpayers.
And, and, and the state of Georgia gives us the opportunity to be able to do that. Now, we already do that with water and sewer. We already put in major water and sewer projects at a multi-million dollars that really is not relative to a single developer. But everybody that's involved on that line going through, they have to pay what they call a cost recovery fee as part of their building permit when they get their permit. And that again, keeps you from having to pay for it. The answer on the sewer, we spent $24 million on a state of the art sewer plant that has all the reused water that we can go back and use for irrigation on some of these beautiful, beautiful parkways that could get built for about a million and a half bucks. All this land can tie right into that. And it's, it's on one of these maps right there. It can tie into that, that plant for a million and a half dollars.
It can tie into that, that plant for a million and a half dollars. Or, the people that live down, the people that live down here, including me, that who lives in the city, including you, you're gonna wind up fourteen million dollars for a new sewer plant being built down in this area, when it could be done for a million and a half dollars. Of course, it's the same thing, you put twelve and a half million dollars to work somewhere else. Now, the question that I heard, the comment I heard, but that gives us the control. That's the problem.
How, how does it give you control? Explain that.
There shouldn't be, I, we're not, we're not the Union Forces and the, and the Yankees, I mean, the, the, uh, the Confederates anymore. We should be one community. Half of the people in here, everybody signs their name, whoever said it, Richmond Hill, Georgia, three-one-three-two-four. You cannot look at this map right here and tell me, what is the difference between this lady who lives at Redbird and me who lives behind Publix? We're, we're the same people, and, and you should, if you can ever get it to where one group can come together, and annexation is probably not the answer, but where they at least work on water and sewer, fire protection, recreation, which would be a good thing to go on, libraries would go on.
Unification.
We could put four, five committees out there, and we could start doing it just like that. Karen, right? We could do it just like that, if we would work together.
We need a mouthful.
Work together.
You said a mouthful.
I said a mouthful, work together. And if you can get that message delivered, that we can work together, we will take all of this real data. This is nobody's opinion, real data, and have this same meeting right now in the County Annex Building. And let's invite everybody that lives down in that area to come.
All right, this lady over here.
I will say that I have reached out to the county commission and asked, you know, for a meeting like this to talk about the growth and development. And there was supposed to have been one in May, and then in June, and now we're in July, and absolutely nothing has happened.
And I, I do want, and it come up, I wanna go about County Commission meeting night. And I do apologize if I'm setting this up. When we picked the date, uh, none of us thought of a better County Commission night. But I, I agree we picked the night, and I do apologize for that. Uh, I say this lady back here.
Yeah, I have a question. Then the luxury apartments that are going up across.
There will be that new road that went in.
So it's gonna come, it's not gonna come off on 144, but, oh, you said it's come down.
But it could also go to Brisbane.
The entrance to the development comes off of that road. That road goes to 144. It also goes to Brisbane.
Is there a traffic light or something gonna be put in?
The traffic light, we've already planned for it, and the developers have allocated money into an escrow account for it. When the widening happens, G-dot will, will determine whether it meets warrants, and then that light will be put in.
That's an indeterminate timing, because we don't know when G-dot is going to widen that part of the road.
The widening's supposed to be spring, next year. Uh, they.
Within the next month or two.
Some will be up.
I have one more, one more question. What kind of buffer is gonna be put up there? Because there's a part, there's tremendous density there, and they're right on the road, right on the road. What, what's gonna?
Right on the highway.
Yeah.
There's additional landscaping to go in, and it's a thirty-foot buffer, uh, as well as, uh, sometime back. So, but there will be some additional plantings that will be put in.
But real, one, one, one comment on your answer to your question. We live behind Publix there at the golf course. My wife and I would never dream of leaving our subdivision and making a left and going to Fort Royal, 144. We make a right, we go to Harris Trail, we make a right, and then we either go all the way down to seventeen, or we come out Harris Trail, I mean, uh, Timber Trail, where we have that new red light. And just about all these developments that you see in here, we do that. And, and our, our issue is, we can't get out because of the twenty-seven hundred families that are coming up this way, and they're building two and three hundred a year, and they're exploding with twenty-nine hundred in this puddle, with exactly what you're talking about.
This lady over here.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I did a little research before I came, and because it seems like housing development is driving a lot of this conversation about traffic patterns. I looked it up, and, uh, rent in Richmond Hill ranges from nine hundred and forty dollars a month for a one-bedroom to about twenty-three hundred for a six-bedroom, um, which is on Zillow. And so a two-bedroom house or apartment could run you anywhere from, you know, eleven hundred to fifteen hundred dollars a month. And I continued to do this research, because if you wanna rent a two-bedroom in Richmond Hill, you essentially need to make about twenty-four dollars an hour, um, or, you know, almost fifty thousand a year to rent a, um, housing here. So, my question is, is the council looking at how to also develop housing that is affordable for the service workers and for the people who live in this community to be able to afford housing? We don't have public transportation, and I think we're all thankful that we can go down to Kroger, and we can go to Publix, and that the cashier who probably makes eight bucks an hour is there to service us, or that the, um, you know, the person who, uh, takes care of our child at the preschool here in Richmond Hill, they might make between ten and twelve dollars an hour. So, um, is, is affordable housing, um, part of the picture when we're granting, um, these, um, permits for development to consider that, you know, we wanna have a diverse community economically that can, um, work and live here in Richmond Hill?
That was, that was one of our main objectives when we redid our development regulations, was that diversified housing topic. Um, there's a lot of, uh, chatter about multifamily developments. And we, as a city, in a, in a densely populated area, and one of our responsibilities and our civic duties is to provide for diversity in housing. Um, you're going to have more dense development. Um, we have had two, um, it's not a HUD program, but it's an IRS program. It's a, it's a tax credit, low-income housing tax credit for senior living developments. One off of Timber Trail, one behind the Goodwill. Um, council, in the multifamily developments, they've, uh, allowed for a little bit more, more density with the townhome, townhome developments, provide another option. And then, again, you, the market bases the, what the rents are. Um, but just the, the multifamily, um, albeit, as you, I mentioned in the slide that I presented, that they were previously approved or entitled. Um, councils made sure that they look aesthetically well, and that they have the proper amenities, but they do provide another option for people from a housing standpoint, as far as apartments and things like that. So it, it's a part of our comprehensive plan. It's a, you know, to be quite honest with, with you in planning, it's one of our state law mandates, um, in comprehensive planning, to look at the diversification of housing.
Uh, this lady.
If the judge's here, you might wanna continue this conversation at the county commission meeting, which is the first, second Tuesday in August, it starts at five-thirty. It'll be at the admin building.
Well, we, we are going to try to set up a meeting down there with them, we'd love to.
And I encourage everyone that's here to continue this conversation there. It might be a good idea.
Did everyone hear that?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, let's see, this lady, I think, right here, yeah.
Yeah, um, it was basically, um, off of what she was talking about, those luxury apartments.
Yeah.
I think it's actually kinda silly even allowing them to take a left onto 144. It should be a right only, and then have them drive down to Brisbane, go to that light. There's no need for a light on top of a light on top of a light, because as we see on seventeen, which I drive all the time, those three lights every morning, it just backs the traffic up. Backs it up, going, backs it up, coming back.
Uh. We have got a head.
I'll go up the other way.
It's going to the park. You're talking about. It's in the park. It happens.
New plan in the back.
Yeah.
The parkers, the parkers one.
The park. All right, I'm gonna take a few more, and then, and then let's get into something new. This lady hasn't had a chance, back there. Uh, whichever, okay.
He's got my question.
Okay.
Uh, I've been to the school board meetings, I've been to the commissioners' meetings, and I've been now to the town council meeting. All of y'all are talking about, we need to work together. Everybody's saying that for the last six months, but I don't see anything happening. Has anybody ever read about Toyota Kaizen problem-solving method? We use it in business all the time to solve problems. You bring in a mediator who's disassociated with all of you, you stay there until you get the problem solved. I would like to see that in our county with all of this type information. The school board wants more information, y'all want more information, county, I as a citizen want more information. We're not getting it, that's the biggest problem I see. But I would encourage that we look into these joint meetings, and I still say you gotta have a mediator, because nobody can control all the personalities and all the, I mean, y'all feel strongly about Richmond Hill, they feel strongly about the commission, the school board has their thoughts. But if you don't get together pretty soon, we're gonna march to the tune that our ci- our whole county's gonna go down.
Sorry, I was just talking with a school board member today. Such a meeting is on, in the, on the books. I don't know a date yet of such a meeting as in the books.
But the school board is, why they pushing this?
It will include school, it will include four, as I said earlier, it will include all four governments in Bryan County. Richmond Hill, Pembroke, county, uh, county commissioners, and the school board.
There was a time in Richmond Hill.
Let, let me add to part of that, and there again, I'm not, I don't wanna throw stones, but. City Mayor, you'll back me up on this. I recently requested a joint meeting between the county commissioners and the city council. Yet to hear anything back on it. And that's all I can do.
So if we're, if we're voting for commissioners, we should be able to help for people who are in the city.
That's the same message I heard from them, though. I, I heard the same thing as from their meeting.
I've got, I've got a witness, I've got a witness here to tell you that I did that, so that's all I can tell you.
Can I set the meeting up for y'all?
All right. I second their motion.
I don't need the glory, I don't care who sets it up.
Well, you know, Mayor, if you don't get a call back, you know what to do, you pick up the phone, you call again. And, and I, I'm just saying that, as we, like, we all think blame on anybody else.
Before, before anybody, you know.
I don't wanna hear.
Those, those are great guys and girls, we're great guys and girls. All we gotta do is exactly what you said, we gotta put the same jersey on, get on the same team. Because I am convinced from the hundreds and hundreds of people that I've talked to, and there is one commissioner that supports this, and there's another commissioner getting ready to be elected that's gonna support it too, so he says, that sees this as one issue that needs to be worked on by both bodies. And there's nobody gonna have advantage over the other one in the competition or whatever. Who are we competing against? I mean, we're, we're all the same.
Yeah, damaging ourselves.
All right, let me take, uh, that young hat back, you haven't had a chance.
Yeah.
This gentleman here's been so patient, I'd love to have.
Well, he's had, he's had a chance.
Well, I can defer to the gentleman here.
Okay, go ahead then.
But thank.
Well, my question was, thank you, bud. And my question was, okay, my, what I'm saying is, there's a communication problem between city and county. And, but you both claim they want the same thing for, for this tour of Richmond Hill, Bryan County. All I'm saying is, I'm a voter, and I, and I want, I want to see my government reach out to whoever requires it be. And I'm sure there's some county people here who want to say. Let, let me, let me address that, because I'm, I'm the one who probably has the most interaction with, with the county guys. It hadn't been great, but I'll make a promise to everyone in this room, we will make a better and more deliberate effort to get us all in the same room, and I think they would agree, I'm almost one-hundred percent certain they would agree. Just we'll all get in the same room, and we'll, we'll, we'll work on some of these issues. I think now that, that, that we have kinda demonstrated that it's not a city issue, it's not a county issue. I think a lot of people have been educated, I hope, in this room to turn, to figure out they're not two separate issues. Maybe you didn't think that way to begin with, but I can assure you, a lot of folks have thought it being a city issue or a county issue. I think we've demonstrated, and that was part of our point for tonight, I hope you can, can.
I agree, it's not fair for us beating you guys up, because.
I, I'm fine, you know, I mean, and, and, and I don't think we've been beat up too bad, maybe it looks worse than y'all being beat up. Uh, but the point is that it's not a city problem, it's not a county problem, it's a, it's a one-unit problem. And we're telling y'all, the public, that we are more than happy to work with the county financially as well. I mean, I think we've, we've shown that we will commit dollars financially to something that we don't necessarily control. I, I'm almost certain that they'll feel the same way. We just haven't been seeing eye to eye at this time. But I, I, I will make a commitment that we're gonna work, work that out. I think the good first step is probably doing this presentation down at the, at a county commission meeting. So if anyone wants to tell them to invite us to come to this presentation at one of their meetings, I'm sure we'll, we'd be happy to do that. Um, I know they were planning a town hall on their own, I think. Um, maybe we can, maybe we can do it at the same time, I don't know. But I, to answer your question, and to answer someone else's question, who's been hammering us about not working together, not working good, we have, we, we, we will start that process, and that's what a lot of this is about, to show that it's not a separate issue, it's one issue.
Hey, Mayor Chris, real quick, the gentleman right there, I noticed several people been leaving. I'm gonna hang around, and I'd love for you to come up right on this corner, and let me write down some things in hand to you, that you, about information that I'd like for you to take back with you, that kinda supports some of this information that you were talking about.
All right, I'll be right here.
Yeah.
Thank you for having us. I mean, it's a first step. We have grown, we're here, there's, you know, there's no reason to blame each other. And I appreciate you having us, and the county's gonna have there, and we will all work together. Thank you for.
I appreciate it. Uh, and we will be around to try to answer any questions, but.
We may be around longer, it just started pouring down, right? We can't talk about any of this.
But look at the maps, look at the maps.
And I did, I did want to stress one more time, that, you know, to start with, and I'll say it before you leave. We're not here to throw rocks, to throw anybody under a bus, we're here, we want to work for the review, we wanna do what's best for the citizens of South Bryan County. And that's what the city, the county, school, all of us need to work, for what's best for our citizens. And that's the message I wanna leave with you. Thanks for coming.
You wanna see us as one, comment Richmond Hill, let's do this.